Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jaime Gomez is coming in in a moment. We have a quorum. We are absent several people tonight. Murphy Sewell, Susie Torado, and Dr. Garcia are not here with us tonight. But we have a lot on our plates, and so we're just gonna get started with business. And the first thing on the agenda is approval of the October 19th, 199th Board of Education Meeting Minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
Make motion to accept.
Motion made by Ilda, seconded by Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the October 9th minutes? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I guess I am. I missed the first part of it.
Okay.
But I signed it, didn't I?
This is the minutes for October 9th?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay.
I'm in.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anybody signed up for public comment?
Thank you.
James Flores, first. You need to speak in the mic.
Hello?
You need to speak in the mic, so people...
Hello, my name is James Flores. Third issue, I'm almost blind, I had to be home early, and I had to wait two hours because you're gonna have the executive session right in the beginning?
Yes.
That mean that people like me, old people that cannot drive, had to wait here two hours. In the town council, we, they have to serve the people. But we do executive session in the end. That way, people like me, old people, I can not, had to walk because I cannot drive the dark. It's not fair for people like me to be here two hours taking out while you had a discussion eating cake and in that meeting. It's not fair. Another issue I need to explain to you about politics. People that vote no for the budget, they have no power at all. Everybody's scared because they know how thousand vote, eleven hundred vote. That must scare me. What scares me is the inactivity and the laziness of Wyndham Public School staff. No, everybody, please, because I got a good sister back there. But you know Ms. Hadda who talk about, I love Ms. Hadda, Ms. Hadda is my sister. I talk about the Wyndham Public Staff laziness, that they don't go out and work for the budget. And then look like this group is a big monster. No! If you see the movie The Wizard of Oz, remember the little guy behind the curtain with the strong voice? And everybody was scared. No, it was the little guy behind the curtain. I have no problem with the no vote. Only thousand vote. I can get two hundred vote, my sir. But the reason we don't have a budget is not because of the big no vote, no. Because, like I say before, the biggest issue is Wyndham Public School civil war. It's a war between everybody. It's no brotherhood. Everybody is after their own agenda. And many people like me that care because I'm forget I'm a bus driver, I live in public housing, I'm a lone income, I don't have bank account, people like me that really care for the children are left behind because they got people with a big agenda. I gonna ask all my brothers and sisters, especially my brother Randall Pros, Pros? My brother, I love you. I cannot vote for you, but I love you. You know my, part of my dream team, but I love you. Try to work together with teacher federation, custodians, because also we had the, like, the class. Teacher Gojilla, Custodian Gojilla, and the Crossing Galgojilla. No! We are workers. We have to stick as worker. I know you like capitalism. No! Let's stick as a worker, custodian, bus driver, everybody as brotherhood. And that's a problem. You got the federation union talking this way, and the paraprofessional union, the custodian union, it's nobody knows what's going on here. The only way we can show to those people, that I call haters, because I see the people that vote no on Facebook. I love it. Become famous now. They call me every name in the book. Let's...
You need to wrap it up.
Okay, I'm gonna wrap it up in two minutes. Let's wrap it up in two minutes now. Let's, instead to vote no for hate, let's vote just for love. Let's vote by love, not by hate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one other person signed up, Henry Crane.
Is this working?
Yes, yes, is this working? It's really for the people watching on television to hear you.
Oh, I got that, but if you can hear it, then maybe it's working. Thank you. My name is Henry Crane, and I live in Willamette. And we have a budget that's coming up in December. We have people who are running for office in November. And tonight, I don't know the percentage of kids who graduated from Wyndham High School. And I'm sitting in this building, and I don't know that answer. And to be honest, zero means something. I have zero knowledge. I do know that probably over a hundred kids graduated. I'm pretty confident of that. That's usually what graduates from Wyndham High School. Ten graduated after given, after being given a golden alibi to teenagers. You don't have to go maybe because your school failed. It closed. Those students, ten of them, didn't just go to high school, whatever was available. They graduated. And I read about that in the paper. I know about that. But I still don't know zero about what the percentage is of kids who graduated. I sat through a meeting several, a while ago, where a superintendent was let go. And part of the reasoning given for that decision was, as I understood it, you can't move the needle, the kids aren't graduating, the percentages aren't good. Literacy across the board, lots of test scores, didn't cut it. But little I've been able to understand, those numbers changed when you got a different superintendent. They have improved. That's my impression. Where is your pride? Where is your pride in your students? Why don't we know about this? We know about the other things. I never thought when I voted for anyone to sit in any of these chairs, insurance actuary. I never thought of that. I never thought of that as a qualification. Because I came to some meetings and because my father taught me, I expected certain things of politicians. I expected certain things of a school board. Your ability to participate in a discussion, reasonable discussion, that was robust on whether or not a superintendent of schools was moving the needle, capable of leading a school system, educating, educate stuff, stuff that could improve literacy, lots of stuff like that. Not an insurance actuary. I never thought insurance hedge fund manager. Never entered my head when I decided who sat in these chairs. So I really want you to be proud of your students. And I want you to be proud enough to share about it. But really, I haven't figured out how, in all of this, you, any of these things you've communicated, how many kids are graduating and what the successes are. I have heard about Echo Program, but not what the successes are overall of these kids. And I've been pounding at this for years and gotten nowhere.
Henry, you need to wrap it up.
So please, think of zero and think that you shouldn't be at zero. Please. I need more than zero for being motivated to vote for anything, even if you sit in these chairs. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody who didn't sign up for public comment that would like to speak? Okay. So we're going to, next item on the agenda is proposed for executive session. Discussion and possible action concerning the contractual grievance filed by the Wyndham Federation of Teachers. We're going to go into executive session. The board is gonna get up with the other people going into executive session and go into a separate conference room, so the rest of the people can stay here. Yes, yeah, I, yeah, I'm just giving people a heads up that we're gonna move into another room to do the deliberations. I'm sorry. So what we'll do right now is invite the teachers to the table here. Whoever is speaking. Right. This part, this part of the meeting, to be clear, is in open session. Yeah. The evidentiary part.
So all of them should come up?
Yes.
Everyone giving evidence?
Yep. So the, that was our attorney, Jessica Ritter, speaking. And, well, yeah, but there may be other people in the room who don't know who this woman is over here on the side directing the situation here. So I don't know who's starting this, who's kicking off, and please identify yourself for the audience.
Good evening. I'm Randall Pros. I'm the president of the Wyndham Federation of Teachers, and...
I'm Ben Wennergrad, field rep from AFT Connecticut.
Elizabeth Pros, I am a vice president of the AFT.
So you wanna... Beth's gonna pass out the handout that I'll go through with you in a second. Cracking. I think I should sing a song. Always wanted it. Everybody has the paper? Alright, so Wyndham Federation of Teachers Step Placement Grievance Presentation. If you look at the overview, this came about during contract negotiations last year, when the teachers were looking at salaries and pay scales and negotiating at wages. After this, we filed a complaint by grievance in April of 2019. We met several times with Ms. Bagueto, and we realized that this was a very complex issue that required a lot of investigation, and spent several months looking into this issue. Prior to her departure in June of 2019, she presented the solution to Dr. Garcia and Mrs. Garrett. Further investigation by Ms. Garrett in August of this year revealed more potentially impacted members. Discussions continue with Dr. Garcia, and we're now here seeking redress for this grievance. An overview, a review of the records provided by Ms. Garrett. More than thirty teachers have been placed on a step higher than their experience level. This violated the contract rights of eighty of our members that were violated by this hiring process. Since 2014, our contract has included the following underlying provision. Alright, I'm gonna get to, in my own words. People are being hired in at a pay scale way higher than longtime loyal Wyndham employees. Teachers that have been here fifteen years, eighteen years, that were on step ten, eleven, or twelve. Beth could speak to that. How many years did it take you to get to?
She needs the mic.
While we were looking over the, and proposing how we were going to be able to negotiate, we noticed that there were a lot of discrepancies. And so I've been here for twenty-two years, and I actually made it to longevity, which is twenty years, before I made it to the top step. So that means I was frozen, or we didn't move a step ahead for about five to six years.
So in 2014, because teachers were being hired in at a higher rate than long-term loyal Wyndham employees, we added the language on here. Initial placement of a newly hired teacher on the salary scale shall be determined by the superintendent after consultation with the teacher, subject to the approval of the board by the following limitations. No teacher will be hired at a step higher than any current bargaining unit member with the same years of experience. So that's the violation that we're referring to. If you'll look, the step freezes, deletion of steps one, two, and three have been gone. They've actually added steps at the end, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, over contract cycles, which means that years of experience of step placement are not the same for many long-term Wyndham employees. Mrs. Bagueto, review of the files, revealed teachers hired between 2002 and 2007 were one to four steps behind the placement of new hires with the same experience. Her recommendations were an average of 1.7 steps for impacted members.
So for the people viewing this, there's a chart being handed out by Beth Pros that has more details about the people who are affected by this, the teachers that are affected by this issue.
And as you can see, there's names on there, and how many steps behind they are of other people that were hired in with similar years' experience. The table below includes a list of teachers impacted by longstanding step inequities. Some identified by Wyndham Federation of Teachers, and others identified by the school district itself. I have to say, over and over, in all of our conversations, Ms. Bagueto, and Ms. Garretts, and with Ms. Garcia, no one denied that the contract was violated. They admitted that people were hired in at a step higher than the contract allowed. But if you can look at the chart, it'll tell you how many years and steps some people are behind. It goes, ranges from one to five steps for some of our teachers. Give you a minute to look at that.
So I'm handing out basically a version of what Ms. Garrett produced as well. This is actually probably more information on here than you need. Some of it's not relevant. This was, I think, on her part, an attempt to cost out some of the differences. But what you can see on here pretty clearly is, so the scope of the problem. So if you look on the first page, the first person mentioned with a hire date of January 9th, 2018, you can see that first column, highest step of existing WFT member is a step four. If you go across, those are people with two years' experience, you can see that this individual was hired at step five. So that sixth column, that where teacher is placed, 2018-19, that shows what the placement was when they were hired. The, that third column from the left shows what the highest current employee is. And let me just, I know this sounds somewhat counterintuitive, that we're complaining about people being paid in too high. Couple issues, I mean, obviously, first, this is about compliance with our contract. There's been no denial on the part of administration that this was anything other than a contract violation. The reason you put in language like this, however, is to avoid the situation where current employees frankly would be better off if they quit and came back. They don't, they're moving steps or not moving steps based on contract. But when you're bringing people in, new people, with that same experience higher than them, horrible for retention, obviously, horrible for morale. It's also hides an issue of low salaries. In other words, if people tend to stay where they are, you know, but when you're doing new hiring and your rates are too low, you find out that you can't hire people. This, by simply ignoring the contract and bringing people in higher, you're able to sort of falsely show that people, that you have a rate that is market rate, which it simply isn't. So to the extent that these people were hired, they negotiated or were offered better packages, then the contract authorizes them to pay, which really shows that the contract wages are too low. They're not sufficient to hire these people, presumably why that was extra money put in.
So that's our presentation. We're seeking step adjustments for the impacted members. We would like to, we recognize the cost of the adjustment is less than the cost of teachers seeking back pages and additional wages, because if you think about how long these teachers have been underpaid or their contract has been violated, it's a lot of money. We'd like to see them brought up to the same as Ms. Geraldine's or Ms. Garrett's has a solution in front of you. In addition, it would solve your problem, that we'd have a competitive wage, that you could hire teachers in with a comparable rate based on their experience. So currently, if Mr. DeSohniers comes to our district with fifteen years' experience under the contract, he may only get paid with ten years, or a step ten. So why would you work at Wyndham when you can go another school district and make another fifteen to twenty thousand dollars more? So it is contract violation. Our contract was broken. Our wages are not competitive. But that, the solution is not to violate all the teachers and the members that have been here for all these years by hiring new people at a rate that's against the current contract.
We have one other handout with a solution to it, sort of showing the differentials. The other thing I want to point out, we're already, in our proposal, and we're talking about potential harm to people that goes back many years. We're not seeking retroactive pay at this point from, you know, six years ago. We understand the cost of that, but certainly at this point, you know, solutions will be difficult. We have people who are not yet, who've been here, I think, eighteen years, are not on top step. And we have people who've come in under this language at top step, who don't have that experience. I'm, you know, what do we do for them? I mean, we have, again, somebody, they're already at the top step on your scale, except that, or close to the top step on the scale, but they haven't gotten there yet. And again, somebody else has been making that money for years, who did not do their experience. And again, those people would have been better off, literally, had they quit and been rehired. And that's certainly not the situation that was contemplated when we drafted this language. And I was there when we negotiated this. We were having problems. We were having problems with people coming in too high, because the rates then were low as well. And we fixed it, but if it wasn't complied with, then sort of it's been broken again. But that was a problem then. We, in good faith, you know, agreed on a system to prevent that from happening. Unfortunately, now we've got the results of those violations.
Is there, is there anything else you'd like to share with us in your presentation? People have any questions? Okay, hearing none. So I want to thank you for your presentation, and seeing that the union has rested its case, we will now convene into a non-meeting to deliberate on the grievance, and I will entertain a motion to do so. Motion made by Michael, seconded by Ilda. Any discussion? All those in favor?
We're going into a non-meeting as opposed to executive session?
That's what, it's called a non-meeting. So we're gonna go into a separate conference room with our attorney, Jessica Ritter, and our director of HR, Stephanie Garrett. And then we will be back.
They're not here. Folks, who else we miss, who are we missing?
Ilda.
If everybody could come to order, please. I'm missing one board member, but all we're doing is, at this point, coming out of executive session. I'll entertain a motion.
We just come out.
We're just coming out of executive session.
It's a non-meeting.
Right, the non-meeting. So, we're coming out of the non-meeting at, what time is it? Eight oh seven. Okay, we have a motion.
I make a motion that we authorize Shipman and Goodwin in collaboration with the administration to try to negotiate an amicable resolution to this matter, subject to board approval.
Motion's been made by Tracy, seconded by Jaime. Ms. Testa, are you taking minutes?
You have to repeat that.
We'll give you the wording for the motion. It was made by Tracy and seconded by Jaime. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion on the table? Is Ilda voting from the doorway? Okay, so it's unanimous. Thank you. So, the superintendent is absent this evening. Are there any reports in recognition? I mean, we got most everything in our board packet. Are there any questions that anybody has about anything? Okay, hearing none. We'll go on to committee reports. And, Mark, I know that Murphy is not here this evening, but he was also not at last week's meeting. So, is there anything?
Did you skip the two B and C?
I asked people if there were any questions on anything that was under superintendent's reports, and there were none. Sorry to catch you off guard.
Yeah, we have a list of the transfers that we need to approve tonight. I think there's only two of them. There are... The meeting, we had a list of the transfers that were... Listen, the transfers, there's just two of them, and they were primarily to put monies in the right places. They weren't actual... It's just reclassifications of the money. Is that right, Rita?
So, they're in your packet. Budget transfers. I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget transfers. Oh, that's right, that's right. It's later on. I'm sorry, guys. So, we'll be... Do you have any questions about the budget transfers at this point? Is there anything you need to share with us about them, Mark?
No, as I said, it's the two, the last two that aren't in the shap- No, as I said, it's the two, the last two that aren't in the shaded, and they're, they're just moving money into the proper accounts. It's money that were put in different accounts, and they were just moving them into their...
The forty-four hundred.
The four thou, yeah, forty-four dollars.
Four thousand, four hundred, total. Okay. Anything else you want to report on?
Well, the only thing we don't have tonight, and it's probably due to the absence of the superintendents, are, is the detailed list of where the cuts were made. That's, that was requested at the, at the meeting. We don't have those yet. You and Tracy specifically asked for the list of the proposed cuts.
Proposed cuts.
We wanted the details. We, that's the only thing that's missing, though, because she's not here tonight, so...
Right, and we, we've always been planning on taking action on those and discussing those in November. Yeah, so we have a little more time to deal with those. I will make another request to get them.
Well, this decisions are, the discussion we had in the board meeting, in the committee meeting, rather, was that decisions are being made right now on things to cut and things not to cut. We don't know generally where we are. It's hard to move forward. You know, if you know you have five hundred dollars for rent every month, and rent goes up, well, you have to figure out where you're going to start cutting back. And if you have to start cutting back on electricity or your medical bills, you have to start cutting back right away to make that rent. Start figuring out where our cutbacks are and making sure we can take action now before it's May, June, and we've overspent.
Right, but the other thing I want to say is that when I was at the Board of Finance hearing and meeting last week, they asked for a list of cuts, and I wanted to make it clear that the board would like to look at all of those and discuss them during the month of November, after the new board was seated and before December 3rd, so...
It needs to be ready for November, though, so we can start discussing it right away. We can't say, well, we'll wait for the new board to be seated, and then we're going to wait for Christmas, and then it's going to be January, and then we're still looking for that information. And I have complete faiths that our finance department currently can, can handle that, but, but it's something that we don't want to delay too long on, so we know exactly where we stand.
So, is that noted, please? That we, that we, that we will need a list of the proposed cuts that are being talked about? Is there anything you want to say about that, Rita?
I will have them for you if you request them.
Thank you.
Well, it's, it's, I'm sure Rita will produce them, but it's, it's the administration that's going to actually do the cuts. So, Rita's just the record keeper, if you will.
Right.
The budget's going to come from the administration, so we need them to, to make the cuts, rather than Rita, to get us the list. I need the cuts that the administration's making. If you understand, I mean, Rita's not making the cuts, she's just merely reporting on the cuts that the administration is making.
Right, right, right. I'm just, I just was asking if it was noted by staff that we requested that, that's all.
That may have been done already, no? That's what I mentioned, Rita.
I have the list. I'll get it to you.
You have a list?
I have the list.
Okay, great.
Yeah, at the last finance meeting, we discussed about three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars with the cuts, but there's still many more to come.
Right.
And we wanted the details of those cuts.
I have the details, but I don't have the copies with me. I can get them to you.
All right, thank you.
Just put them in a weekly packet.
Yeah, put them in our weekly packet, that would be terrific. Thank you. Any questions for Finance and Audit Committee?
Nope.
Okay, School Planning and Design Committee?
We haven't met since the last board meeting, so we will have another meeting probably the first Thursday of the month, which is generally when I have them.
And, anybody have any questions for that committee?
I have a question, maybe, but maybe you can answer, because it's regarding renovation of the high school. Is it appropriate, my?
Yeah, sure.
I'm just curious. I've been looking at the budget, and I see the, I'm looking at the cost of legal fees, licenses. It's about nineteen fees, licenses, something else, nineteen million, fifteen percent of the costs.
Of the high school renovation plan?
Yes. If you look at it...
Where did you get that number from?
What page is that?
Not here, not now, that's previous.
It's, it's, it's more than likely your, your fees, your permit fee, all your, all the fees, that's about the number it came up to.
Yeah, right, but, you know, I was wondering, it can be broken down, you know, to what specifically are we talking about?
I can ask for that, I can request that of the building committee.
Could you please, that was my question.
Okay, so that was from the last meeting?
From the last meeting.
Okay.
They had, there is the last item, I think, is licenses and fees, something else. And I think that includes the amount of the design and architectural.
Okay, I'll find out what that, what that entails, yes. I will get it back to you, no problem.
Mike?
Yeah, I was just going to say that a lot of that is set by the, by the municipality. It's a percentage, so...
I'm sure it is.
It's...
And the contingency may even be in there. I'm not sure, I don't have that number in front of me right now. I didn't bring that meeting book to this meeting. So, I'll find out, and I'll get back to you.
Thank you, any other questions? Hey, Policy Committee? Oh, you have a question, go ahead.
I said that was a good question.
Policy Committee?
We do not have anything to report, and we will meet next week, so...
Next, what day next week?
I'm sorry, next Thursday, the thirtieth, at five thirty.
That's the thirty-first.
Oh, sorry, the thirty-first, Halloween, Halloween night.
You're going to meet on Halloween night?
Yes. Yes, we are. Yes. Scared.
Any questions?
We're going to come dressed up.
Okay, Executive Committee, we have not met since our meeting at the beginning of the month, since our last meeting. Our next scheduled meeting is November sixth. And as we have in the past few months, we usually have been moving back the time for the executive committee so that we can accommodate the Finance and Audit Committee, because the Finance and Audit Committee has had to change their meeting dates to accommodate our, our new regimen of meeting earlier in the month, I mean, meeting before the, the meeting each month, so that they have the correct information together to report to the full board. So, I'll just have to negotiate with that committee about how we're going to schedule that evening, or whether or not you guys are going to meet on a different night, so, to be, to be determined. But the executive committee will meet on November sixth. Any questions? Okay. I just want to give a, next item on the agenda is the forensic analysis, and I just want to reassure everybody that we're, that we're moving forward and we're in, in very good shape. I didn't get a chance before tonight to, to update the list where I put red, red lettering and, you know, what we are doing on each thing, but I will do that within the next week and get it out to the full board. But we, we do have, we've been working on getting clarity on the decision-making chart and the organizational chart about who can input and, and who can approve expenditures. We already have implemented pretty heavy-duty checks and balances on approval of, of, of spending money. And I can say with confidence that things are not just passing through without a second or a third set of eyes on each thing, correct, right? Our, our monthly reporting is, is moving along, and, and I'm happy to say that we do have Munis reports in our packets now, and the Finance and Audit Committee is keeping on top of that and making sure that we're getting monthly reports. We're working out the kinks of making sure we have a readable, usable narrative with the monthly reports, just to highlight, you know, any big things that people should be paying attention to, any, any things we need to be worried about, things of that sort. And I know, moving forward, that we'll get better and better at that. The, there is no resolution that has been passed by Town Council yet, at this point, on the management, co-management of the Health Insurance Reserve Fund. I had asked board members for input on the language at our last meeting. I have let people at Town Hall know that we have things that we'd like to weigh in on, and they've assured me that they won't be taking any action without making sure that they look at what we're suggesting. So, I would say that you probably have another day or so to weigh in, if you want to, on that, but that is moving, moving forward. Budget transfers and allocate, reallocations are happening. We're going to be acting on them again this evening. And we are going to audit sporadically. The, the certain funds that were highlighted in the, in the forensic analysis that don't have real problems, but they're things that we should be taking a look at, so we're going to be scheduling throughout the year a way to take a look at transportation, special education facilities, and maintenance, and information technology trans, transactions. And those are the major things that are going on. Pretty much, everything is, is, is moving along. And I'm pleased to say that after a lot of work on the part of board members and staff, things are falling into place. Does anybody have any questions on any of that? Okay, thank you. Now, we're going to hear a report on the Dos Rios. Who's up tonight to do that?
Me.
Make sure you introduce yourself for the audience, thanks.
I'm Radha Madambi. I'm the Director of our English for Speakers of Other Languages, Bilingual Education and World Languages Program. So, I'd like to talk to you all about Dos Rios, which is Wyndham's one-way dual-language program that we instituted last year. So, just as a reminder, I know I've presented before, but what is a one-way dual program? A one-way dual program is a bilingual program. We provide instruction in two languages, with at least fifty percent of the time in the target language, which, for our district, is Spanish. We service only our English language learners. This is the EL program that we're mandated to provide. And we service in this the EL students who speak the target language. They have Spanish as a home language. And we, we're not aiming to transition our students from, from the program to a monolingual English classroom. Okay, just to see the difference, before, we had a transitional program, just to see what the differences are. So, in a transitional bilingual program, the objective is fluency in English, whereas in a one-way dual program, the objective is fluency and biliteracy in both languages. Transitional bilingual classes are for ELLs who speak Spanish. Same thing for a one-way dual program. The duration of a transitional bilingual program is usually one to three years, whereas for a one-way dual language program, it's kindergarten through the fifth grades. Okay, so, in a transitional bilingual program, the objective is to use Spanish so that it transfers over to English. In a one-way dual program, we're still teaching literacy in Spanish, but the idea is that it's going to transfer bidirectionally. So, the Spanish is going to be helping the English, and the English is going to be helping the Spanish. Okay, we have a longstanding and wonderful program in our district, Compañeros, which is a two-way dual program. So, what's the difference between a one-way dual and a two-way dual program? So, in both, the objective is the same, right? The fluency in both languages, fluency and biliteracy. In a one-way dual program, it's for our ELL students who speak Spanish. There is no lottery process. Whereas in a two-way dual program, we have a lottery process. It's approximately fifty percent of the students are predominantly Spanish speakers, and fifty percent are English speakers. The duration for both programs has to be at least six years, when started in kindergarten. And then students, again, in both programs are taught literacy in both languages so that there's a bidirectional transfer, the English helping the Spanish and the Spanish helping the English. Okay, so why did we decide to start a one-way dual program? Okay, so, this is like the famous dual-language graph. What, what does the research say? So, if you see, these represent, this is California, we won't look at that one, but if you see, these are the different kinds of ELL programs. At the bottom, you have the, okay, so right here is where our monolingual English speakers are scoring. So, this fifty percent line is basically where you would expect the average monolingual English speaker to be scoring. And here, down here are the grades. So, these lines represent different programs. So, this is a push-in program, I'm sorry, a pull-out program, a push-in program. And then you're looking at transitional bilingual programs. And if you see, the top two are the one-way dual and two-way dual programs. And up to the third grade, doesn't matter what you're doing. Everybody's going to be scoring around the same. However, that increase starts to drop off in all of the programs other than the dual-language programs. And in the dual-language programs, we not only close that achievement gap, but students eventually exceed. So, they start scoring better than monolingual English speakers. But the key here is that it's the only program that closes the achievement gap between students who are English language learners and students who are not. There's also a lot of, a lot of benefits for being bilingual, brain-based benefits. So, they've found that there's a greater ability to concentrate, greater task-switching abilities, because students are doing that constantly. They also found that there's a faster recovery from strokes when students are much older. And then also, when students are much older, there's a slower manifestation of Alzheimer's and dementia. So, it's not that they don't get, you know, everybody will get it if that's in your genes, but once they've gotten it, it may not manifest, you may not see it, because they're able to pull on different neurons in their brains already. Additional benefits of a bilingual education is the competitive advantage that our students have, when they can speak more than one language in the workforce and on college applications. Also, there's an inverse correlation between high school dropout rates and the valuation of the minority language. Also, it enhances sociocultural competence in a world that's growing increasingly smaller. That's important. And then eventual awarding of the SEAL of Biliteracy. As you all know, Connecticut now gives a SEAL of Biliteracy. It's an award for students who are in high school tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, where they graduate with a SEAL that says that they can speak more than one language. So, what are the goals of our program? The goals of our program are high academic achievement, bilingualism and biliteracy, and sociocultural competence. And these are actually the same goals that we have for Compañeros. Okay, so, our district, and this is something that's great for us, is that we are actually having more students who are in dual-language programs, Compañeros and Dos Rios combined. So, at Natchog and Sweeney, we have kindergarten, this is last year's, kindergarten first and second grades. And then at Wyndham Center, we had kindergarten first. This year, we added a grade level to each of these schools. So, our dual-language students from two thousand seventeen to eighteen was three hundred and fifty-four students. Now, we are, from two thousand eighteen to nineteen, five hundred and fourteen students. So, we're reaching more kids. We're already seeing the growth happening. These are growth levels, not proficiency. But if you see, and I'll just, I don't want to read all of them to you all, but like if you look at, this is Wyndham Center dual. So, if you look at kindergarten math, students who met district growth benchmarks on IREDDI, you had seventy-eight percent. If you see kindergarten math in Dos Rios, we had ninety-four point one-two percent. So, we're seeing the growth. Now, again, this is not proficiency level, but it is showing that we're moving in the right direction. You see similar results for Natchog. Just picking one, like second-grade ELA scores. District-wide, we were at seventy percent who are meeting benchmark. We were at eighty-four point two-one percent for the students who are in the program. And similar scores for Sweeney. Kindergarten math, seventy-eight percent reached in the whole district. Hundred percent of our kids actually reached in the program. So, we are seeing that growth is happening. Listening to our teachers, always important, right? So, this is a quote from one of our teachers, Kaylee Vera, in second grade. At Sweeney, she said, "Participating in Dos Rios has been incredible, has been incredible for my students. They have not only made academic growth in both languages for reading and math, they also are incredibly confident in themselves and their bilingualism. We have created an incredible class culture that values diversity, and students are discovering themselves through their bilingual... themselves through their bilingual learning." So that's important to hear from our teachers. And also, we are getting some attention from other districts. So New Haven came to visit Sweeney, and they saw what, how great the program is. And this is from the Assistant Principal at Fairhaven School. She said, "I want to thank you for opening the doors of Sweeney Elementary and allowing us to learn from the wonderful work you are doing with your Dos Rios program. Having been implemented for less than a year, I have to say it was, I was impressed." Or it was impressive, sorry. And then we're hoping for continued growth. We're looking at adding one year every year until we reach at least fifth grade, so that we have a true dual-language program. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. It's very impressive. Does anybody on the board have any questions?
May I?
Yes.
Every year, do you have to buy new supplies, textbooks, stuff like that, as we're adding the years?
So we always have to have those supplies, see whether we have a transitional program or not. So the classrooms have to be outfitted, right? Just as any other classroom. But you would be outfitting the class regardless.
Right. No, I understand that. But I mean, has there been a cost incurred having to do the Dos Rios program?
I'm going to bounce that back over, because the books that were bought were being bought, I know, for all of the classes.
Okay.
So I don't see it as a cost.
That's my question. I got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
That's a good question.
Thank you very much for coming tonight and presenting that to us. We really appreciate it. Yes, at the last meeting, we talked a bit about the December 3 referendum, and that will be the next opportunity that people will have to vote on the budget. And I just wanted to open it up to discussion and see if anybody on the board or anybody from the administration, perhaps Margaret, has anything she wants to share with us regarding outreach and education efforts. I know we heard at the last meeting there might be a survey being done. I don't want to put you on the spot, but if there's something you'd like to offer, that would be great tonight.
Thank you. Yes, December 3 is going to be here before we know it. And we've been looking at, from a strategic perspective, what kind of messaging is different about this budget conversation than what we have faced in June of this year, and then again in September? And clearly, I don't know that our voters understand the implications of an MBR. So I think that there is some education around, you know, where we're at with the minimum budget requirement. And then additionally, just the, the mobilizing our parents and our community to move beyond, you know, getting this budget done. So we do have a little bit of an action plan that we've drafted. We haven't shared it among, you know, the administration too widely, but really just trying to use our connections, trying to use our SGCs to, to further the information to all parents about what we're looking at. And I think that we need to be clear as best we can about the kinds of cuts that we have actually undertaken already, going from, again, from your proposed original budget to what went to the budget in June to September, and now, you know, what we're going to be cutting as a result of this MBR budget. So it's a little bit different because we do have some news to impart, but I do think, you know, I take Mr. Crane's suggestion very seriously. We also have some great news to share about how well our district is doing. So it's a matter of, without overwhelming people, trying to help them to understand what it is that we're working with in terms of the budget. So it's a little bit of a concern to me because we do have the, the November 5 election that people are really probably going to be more focused on that. And then, you know, half a step later, we have another referendum. So just trying to get people to understand the process is challenging, but we know that we do have a lot of opportunities, or some opportunities, between now and then to reach families and reach our electorate and voters, and that's what we're going to try to do.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anybody who wants to make any comments or suggestions or raise any questions at this point, aside from James Flores and the audience? Okay, it's daunting, I know. I can't, I can't remember the last time, I can't remember ever voting in December. So that'll be interesting when we start doing the outreach, to, to get people to even think about voting in December, so. Okay, if there's nothing else, we're on to the action items. And we have a proposed approval of participation in the Educational Credit Management Corporation Scholarship Program, and that was in your packets. I entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
There's a packet, the motion's been made by Tracy, seconded by, by Ildah. And the background on this is that the Wyndham High School is one of eight school districts participating in the ECMC Scholars Program for the State of Connecticut. The program is for the class of 2021 and will offer 10 finalists, a $6,000 scholarship. The program also offers $3,000 in activity funds. So that's what we're voting to approve this evening. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, Tracy?
It says that part of it is financial and that it's determined by the FAFSA forecaster. So the families have to start filling that out before their junior year begins, their junior, it's, it's a daunting task, I'm going through it right now. So I'm wondering, do they start filling it out their sophomore year? Because for some parents, this can be overwhelming. And if the students are selected, are they going to get help filling that out?
Yes, that's it. Yes, the answer to that question is yes. They will be getting assistance and help in fitting out and competing application.
And when will they start filling that out?
Soon as possible, soon as we move to approve.
No, but like during their sophomore years? In the beginning of their junior year?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. That was this one, go ahead.
Anything else, Mark?
Will be, is he going to present the PowerPoint presentation, much as I love PowerPoint?
Oh.
Would you like him to?
You'd like for me to, I don't have to.
They're all queued up, and I'm for the public.
My bad. I, I just went right to the action items and I didn't think about the presentation. Would you like to get up and say anything about this?
He's all dressed, might as well do it.
Mr. Conway?
He dresses like that all the time.
We're on the spot. Okay, okay, then.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, I'll give you a brief synopsis of the Educational Credit Management Corporation System. It's a nonprofit organization that started out in 2005. It operates in three states, which is Virginia, Oregon, as well as one of the state of Connecticut. Oh, okay. Let me see if the clicker works. And as you know, it also is a mentoring program for our juniors and seniors, where it assists to provide skills and resources to assist them to make their dreams become a reality, in short. It also, since 2012, have provided over $3.7 million to 621 Connecticut high school seniors. The purpose of it is to try to bridge the gap between equity and equality for our students because you have, if you look at the U.S. Census, 9% of our low-income families don't achieve their bachelor's degree by the time they reach their mid-20s, whereas though their counterparts, 77% of them do reach their bachelor's degree by their mid-20s. So this is assistance to try to bridge that gap and also providing resources in doing Once again, we are one of eight schools, Bridgeport, East Hartford, New Britain, or some of the other towns in the state of Connecticut that participates in this program. And hopefully, we will have, with the board approval, Wyndham will be another one. Some of the things that $3,000 can be used for are varied. You can use it for leadership and our team-building activities, capping gowns helps out with fees, as well as some other SAT and ACT application fees as well. But most importantly, it can also substitute teachers' fees used for, for field trips and certain things that we can go on for activities for those specific 10 students. Qualifying criteria, as far as, you have certain preferred criteria, dependent child of active learning, duty-retired veterans, students with disabilities, one of the requirements are also free and reduced lunch, which is great because 90% of our students are on free and reduced lunch. Some things that are required, have to demonstrate individual determination to succeed, plan to pursue higher education within six months after graduation of high school. That proposed a question for me, because I said, suppose our students decide, instead of going into, you know, to college, they want to go into the service. Well, that money will still be readily available for them, so they still will be able to achieve and get that $6,000 per student. And then at the high school, as program administrator, the high school councils will be the mentors that will meet with, meet with each student four times during the course of the year. And we also have the principal who will be in charge, our assistant principal that will be assisting in that and overseeing those applicants. Once they get approved for that will be Dr. Morales as well. That was a brief synopsis of it, since I got put on the spot by Mr. Doe.
Well, thank you. Does, does, does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of adopting, I mean approving the motion on the floor? Unanimous. And now we're on to proposed acceptance of a donation from AdoptAClassroom.org for the ESOL SLIFE Department of Wyndham High School. And there's information on this in your packet, and it's pretty exciting. Is there anybody in the, on staff who wants to talk about this at all?
I can say a few things.
Oh, yeah. Why don't you come up and get a mic, okay?
I do.
Yeah. Well, I guess first let's have, put a, get a motion on the floor and then go right ahead.
I make a motion to approve the AdoptAClassroom ESOL SLIFE Department at Wyndham High School's donation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Okay, now you're on.
Can you, is it on? Okay, it is on. This is an exciting opportunity for the high school. William Toledo is the teacher who has been able to get, get this, he got this before in Puerto, he got this before. Should I step away? He got this before in, this always happens to me. Yeah, he was able to get this in Puerto Rico before, and this is SLIFE, is our students with limited or interrupted formal education. So there's the students who come to us who have at least two years' gap in their education, if not more, oftentimes more, where they haven't been to school before, but they're coming into high school. So this is a great opportunity for us to be able to get supplies for our students, so.
Any questions?
Do they know what they'll be using the funds for?
They're looking into curricular sources for the students.
And it's $500 spread across four different?
Four teachers.
And the teachers make the decisions about how they want to use the funds for their students?
Teachers are making the decisions.
Okay. Any, any further questions? Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion on the floor? Unanimous. Thank you. And then the last item on the agenda for action is budget transfers. And Mark talked about them earlier on. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. I move, we approve the budget transfers as presented at the last budget and audit meeting, finance and audit meeting.
I second it.
Motion's been made by Tracy, seconded by Ildah. Now we're up for discussion. Any discussion? It's $4,000, $400 worth of transfers. Okay, all those in favor of the motion that's on the floor? It's unanimous. Thank you. And we're on to the last item on the agenda, which is public comment. Is there anybody who'd like to speak during public comment? Your phone wants to speak during public comment? You do. Okay. James Flores.
James Flores? Okay, let me.
You need to hold the mic.
Hello? Okay, and first of all, if you look that way, it's all staff. Every time I come to this meeting, it's only my sister, Jane Flores, my brother, Monsieur Flores, and my brother, Henry. How come? No, no, they're all staff. I know them. They're staff.
They aren't all staff.
No, they're staff, or they, they relate to, what, because I'm in the island, I talk about island report, education. How come every time it's only my face and two more people here? You need to try to outreach the community. Every time I go to a town council, you got 20, 30 people there. When I go to the Ball of Finance, there's a lot of people there. And my sister Lingai, because this is the last meeting, no cake and ice cream. In the Ball of Finance, we have ice cream for the community and pizza. In the town council, we got pizza and ice cream and cake, because it was the last meeting. That is the way you work on the community, to get engaged. Right now, I'm here for the ice cream, no ice cream. That is, those small detail is very important. Also, I'm very disappointed, because last week, that was the Ball of Finance budget to cut the budget to zero for the school, only three catch up. You know, in Spanish, in Spanish, we say three, only three people shut up. A major event that going to decide the future of our school system, only three people shut up. We need more engagement. And the other issue I want to encourage this board, most likely, we're going to have two new faces in the studio. The numbers, we're going to have two new faces. Or some people are going to come back. I cannot talk about my dream team, because I'm not, I'm not campaigning, I'm only working to get out of the boat. But that is an issue we need to understand. The new people need to balance the information. I know people in this board, they use the media to oppose the education system, but when this person is member of the Board of Education, we don't know in his behalf, on behalf of the whole board. Because people that oppose the education system, they are very aggressive on Facebook. For every people that make a good comment, it's like a twenty comment against the school system. And my question is, we need to balance the information. If we're going to depend on the Chronicle for the information, I lost this lady, she's my sister, but I talking the Chronicle as a media. If we're going to depend on the media to get the right information, won't happen. This board need to be more out there with information. My sister is not here today. I think she's sick, I don't know. But that is information, right now, going to be like a gossip that she moved out to Panama. That is the way we need to order the people. What's going on here? We don't know. Now, some board member going to go on radio, on TV, they're going to bring the idea, and we're going to believe him. We need to have a real, accurate information, no more propaganda and gossip in behalf of the board. We need the real information. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak during public comment?
Can I hear something?
Yes.
This is not the last meeting of the board, this Board of Education. The election happens, and for two weeks after the election, the new board isn't seated. So the November 13 meeting will be of this current Board of Education. Maybe we'll have ice cream and pizza then, James. You should come back then.
Thank you. I don't have the budget.
We don't have a budget.
We don't have a budget. We can't afford that.
You accept donations.
I nominate James Flores to bring pizza and ice cream to our last Board of Education meeting.
I second that. I second that.
Okay.
Well, that's good for the question, you can't see.
Okay.
It's in drive.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Meeting adjourned.